Doing all the time.
All right, let's just do the continuation and then we can get the other stuff. So I go with a continuation scheduled for 7:00 PM. Continuation from February 23rd of a request for definitive subdivision, Kensington Estates, an open space residential cluster special permit for property off Lyndale Road and West Hampton Road, map ID 41-32 in Florence. I think you all saw Carolyn's email, the DPW had concerns, did not issue a stormwater permit, so they're asking for a continuation for two weeks, but they get it all done in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, they were gonna try to rush and redo the model and then give it to Doug this morning for him to review, but they decided that that was too much pressure. So they just rather make sure that it's right.
But they submitted and the caps were wrong, DPW picked out that.
Now, wasn't there, isn't there a time limit? Don't they have 60 days?
Yes, but they officially asked to request the continuance, so.
Okay, so they still have.
Yeah, so I'm taking that as they're waiving all of their allowances under subdivision rules.
So if they don't hit the next, the first meeting in May, we can continue it again? They're not.
You can, or you can just say, so here's the problem, the problem is, the neighbors have to get called every time. The problem is, we're losing two planning board members who are hanging on until they can finish out this process because we can't bring new planning board members on, you know, at this very late stage of the hearing process.
And that won't be here until May.
That's a big problem.
Well, no, because Marilyn Cash will be here.
Right.
And that's, so either they.
So we have eight, seven, six, so if they can be here, we have six. You need, you need a majority of the quorum actually, so subdivision is not that bad, but special permit will need five, because it's a cluster and a subdivision.
Well, it's, I mean, you know.
So we need at least five people for that, and Andrew can vote on a cluster, but not the subdivision piece.
So I guess we have to make it very clear to them that either they're fully done on May 10th.
Or you might just need to.
We have to start from scratch again.
Right.
So. Well, I know, but so I just, I, let's just make sure that they know that, because if they continue it again, it's just, they might as well start from scratch. And we could, all we do is, they withdraw without prejudice and they just submit again, but that allows everybody else to get.
I think I missed, with my search query, I think I missed one of those.
Well, we didn't, we didn't, there was no discussion.
We just continue, you know, we continue it for a while.
So don't try to.
All right, so we need a motion to continue to May 10th at 7:00 PM?
Yeah, because we don't have anything else.
I move we continue the hearing on Kensington subdivision until next, can I actually?
Yeah, that's nice.
Okay. Until May 10th at 7:00 PM.
Second?
In this location.
In this location. All in favor? All right. Do you, Jen, so Elm Street and Story District, we're not discussing, discussing tonight?
Yeah, apologies.
And those are the people you ran out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, excuse me, do we, the little mini set that we got on Kensington, do we toss these? Or are these?
No, you should keep those, because it's really, just has to do with the stormwater calculation, basically is what we're down here.
And you're supposed to keep track of this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can I ask, should I throw out, are these relevant to you?
Is anything earlier than this relevant?
Uh, no, I think we got a whole plan set.
I think I gotta sign those two.
They left, as long as you have, isn't that set, you have the E something, or P, P two, three, and four?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So as long as that's in there.
So I'm fixing to post my stuff.
Yeah, 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 you can.
Next up is the minutes from April 12th.
So we didn't do any minutes last time, I think, right? Or do we, no, we did all agree, that's right, okay.
We did. So we just have the ones from April 12th. Anybody got any comments on the minutes?
There's a couple of places where it says the planning board closed period and not, and should be its public hearing. On page two at the top, and then page three at the bottom, have to add the public hearing. So the autocomplete didn't work or something.
The auto editor didn't complete?
Yeah, it's new though.
Other than that, I didn't read it, but.
Anything else on this? Somebody wanna make a motion?
How many motion we approve the minutes?
April 12th.
April 12th.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor? All right. Next up, uh, date, no, draft, well, we could do subcommittee somewhere. We should wait for Jen. Let's give her a couple minutes.
Yeah.
I assumed she was gonna be here. All right, Carolyn, you're up.
Did, does everybody still have a list of subcommittees? I can put it on, I can put it on the screen, if you have.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, don't, we're waiting for Jen gets here, you wanna do it.
But she wants to stay on housing anyway, right?
You can put her on anything until she fills it.
We need both sets signed, right, so I can send these two?
Yeah. And then how many, is that May four?
There's four on that one.
Okay. I can do that after that, so, not probably the four. Uh, let's see, what else did I, I, um.
Do you have a zoning?
If you wanna start the zoning, I can hand it out.
Yeah, we're waiting for Jen.
So, um, what's that?
Can we put that out until when you can't, for me to handle it?
Well, no, it'll have to be continued, so, basically, let me just describe what's, what has, what I've done here. My goal initially back in February, I think, when we discussed, you guys wanted to go, move ahead on the residential component. So I took the zoning revisions committee recommendations and then really started to, started with urban residential C, and started to redesign the table, and pull in, make changes to the dimensional requirements mostly, and then also cutting out special permits for some things that we've talked a long time about, moving to site plan. And so, there's been a lot, there've been a lot of changes, and the yellows and the strippers didn't show up so well, so I'll also put it on the screen, but I made copies of this, and then I made copies of sort of the core section of the zoning revisions committee report, so that you could see, this, I use this as a framework to, mostly about the dimensional stuff, because that's really what zoning revisions committee focused on for the three urban districts. So I haven't been able to get to B and A yet, but I think what I thought would be good was for you to start the conversation at least about C, knowing that this is sort of generally the direction we take, and then depending on the next few districts, B and A, the dimensions are gonna be slightly different, we can talk about that as well, and sort of take direction. And I also wanna know if this is the right way to go forward, is it going too far, or should we take smaller steps or what have you? So I'm gonna pass out, I think we made five copies that used to do this, so I'll just,
Frank, you wanna just sign them up here, or can you assign some to?
Um, and then, so this is the core, if somebody could get the colored copy?
And can we just, we state, I'm just testing you here, yeah, the goal of this, of what we assigned to the zoning committee was to harmonize the, to get all of the zoning changes consistent, all in one place, and you're trying to make a harmonical structure.
Well, the zoning revisions committee charge was a little bit broader than that. Their charge was, start, research more about implementation of the elements of the plan, and so they talk a lot about, a lot of these sort of things that were all related, but were in separate places, so what.
The sustainability plan, things like.
Right, housing needs, economic development, and then the complexity of the zoning, making it simpler. And so, out of that, was sort of this idea that we would change the tables to be more user-friendly, and change the uses to make it, make many changes from special permit to site plan, because that's a lower threshold, and it really is more about how things function as opposed to uses allowed, because special permits are the holdover, is the only permitting authority that cities and towns could take on back in the seventies and eighties. So as site plan became more and more prevalent as a tool, we haven't carried, we haven't brought things from special permit to site plan as much as we probably should have. So that was a piece of it. And then, of course, looking at the residential component was, and related to housing, was, how do we, and sustainability, how do neighborhoods function now, and there's so many people that love the neighbors we have, but we can't duplicate them, we can't ever build that again, because our zoning is so out of whack with reality. So these, so then, what you've got in front of you is just little section, maybe like 10 pages of the zoning revisions committee report, showing part of their analysis, and Stephen was, worked on this particular piece, so he can speak to that, but the fact that, you know, in urban residential C, 63% of the one, twos, or threes families in URC don't comply, so we can never get those. So if that means if someone converts one of their two families to a single, they can't ever go back to a two family again. So if they resell it, then it'll always be a single family. Or if someone has a huge house, and they just can't manage all of it, and they might need some additional income, they can't add a unit within the footprint of the house, because the zoning wouldn't allow, because it's based on lot size. So I, so basically, what you have then in front of you is the urban residential C table, which, I'll put it on the screen, too, which is the first, Wayne and I have been through various cuts of this, but you'll see that the, I mean, I think what we would need to do is go through at least the first page in a very detailed way, because a lot of it has to do with use changes as well as the dimensionals, and then talk about that, you know, in a big picture way, but also in the detail way. And then the rest, subsequent pages are sort of all about most of the other uses that are typically allowed in the urban residential C district, and where there've been changes that are proposed in this, so, and I, you've got, some of those are stapled in a weird way, so you have to flip them over to be on the first page, I think the pages are numbered, so just look at the bottom of the pages. You see that? So, so I guess first, I would say, I'm just gonna bring it up on the screen here, I don't know what is happening.
Do you want me to give a little background while you're, oh, you got it.
Uh, yeah, so, let me just close this. Why is this, there's something weird projected, do you guys see that?
Yeah, your bulb is higher.
Okay, let me turn off the light, maybe it'll help a little bit. So, yeah, you can go ahead, Stephen.
So, oh, yeah, if you want something, yeah, if we have this whole pile here, we're gonna do two. Yeah, so we look, we started out just looking at the lot sizes, in URC, A and B and A, and the whole streets, you know, we looked at for non-conforming, you know, you couldn't build any of the houses within this neighborhood based on current lot size, without wanting to get any setbacks, two family, one family, just a lot themselves, anything less than 6,000 square feet in URC wasn't a lot. So whole parts of URC just didn't, didn't work, let alone if you wanted to do a two or a three family. So at one point, we started mucking up a model of what a lot would look like, like how big a house you could build in a 3,200 square foot lot, and it's actually, you could build a considerably decent sized house using the current setbacks. So we, we did a lot of like drawing little models and trying to figure out how big a house or how small a house you could be. But, and, and then we tried to come up with some numbers such that, I think our goal at one point was to see if we can get 75% of the houses in URC and B and A actually just to conform, just pick a number, that if we can pick a number that 75% would now conform, what would that number be? And that was where we had like the 3,000 square foot, 3,200 square foot lot. And URC, if we picked that, still there'd be 45% of the houses in URC still would conform, probably, most of them would, and people who wanted to do like an addition could do addition, or people who wanted to like build on a lot, to be perfectly viable, could, so. It was a lot of just looking at, you know, Carolyn gave us all the data, Big Excel spreadsheet, then we looked at maps, and it was really interesting to look at.
So basically, what this table does is sort of the first category, the first row is combining single, two, three family, multifamily, sort of any combination of housing that is currently allowed, allow that by right, instead of having these different categories of, sometimes townhouses and multi uses, or multifamilies or site plan, sometimes there's special permit depending on the various layout of the site. So make those by right, knowing full well that any new construction over 2,000 square feet still requires site plan approval, so the board still has to look at, you know, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be a new townhouse development on a brand new piece of property, you're gonna see it for site plan. But the concept of allowing townhouses in URC shouldn't be prohibitive, or you shouldn't put a, you know, threshold there to say, oh, you need special permit, or you need this other thing. So, so this basically takes the concept of trying to get, and I think the zoning revisions committee said, treat sort of the smaller number of units differently, so singles, twos, and up to four units, I think, differently from big developments, where you've got, dozens and dozens of new units coming online. So this first line is sort of throwing all those residential categories into the by right category, and then over on the dimension side, the lot size, I just started out with 3,000 square feet, because 3,200 is sort of an off number, it's easier to use, you know, multiples of 10. So, so 3,000 square feet, the lot frontage and width changes from what's currently required now is 75 feet to 50, and the reasoning behind that is that, again, these lots are very small, and the zoning revisions committee didn't even get a chance to go through and analyze the percentage of non-conformities with respect to frontage, but there are a lot. And then a lot depth of 50 feet, because that, again, sort of allows some development within the, within the site, you know, there's, there's smaller blocks in, in the URC district currently. And then, I'm just gonna jump down to open space, just so everyone knows, 30%, that's what's currently required now. So there's a lot of concern throughout this whole process about maintaining, not filling in every corner of the urban residential C district. So in this iteration, what we're suggesting is, open space remain what the current standard is. So you might be able to add new units to your property, but you still have to provide parking, and you still need to meet setbacks, and you might have a smaller lot size, but once you bump up into the open space threshold, then you can't add any more units. So it may be that you have the right lot size, but you don't have enough lot area to accommodate the required parking. So that's kind of more of the, that's the thing that will determine how much actual infill can occur, and it'll sort of keep the, the baseline where it is in terms of open space. But then going back up to setbacks, there's a lot of discussion about front setback and the relationship of units to the street, so currently the required front setbacks are 20 feet. So the idea here is to reduce it to 10, because we, and then, at the same time, eliminate the other special permit provisions in the zoning that allow you to come to the planning board if you can show that you're the median of the people on your block face, or, you know, the dimensional averaging piece that's in the zoning. So it sort of says, here's what we, here's where URC currently is, that's how the neighborhoods were built out, and why make it more, and then put all these other options for how people can then bring it back down to what it pretty consistently is in the district. So front setback goes to 10 feet, side setback is a small adjustment from 15 to 10, the idea behind that is currently, if you're non-conforming and you have at least a 10 foot setback, you're allowed by right in the zoning to expand upon that non-conforming side setback, and there has been very little public contention over projects that have come forward where there are minor expansions on pre-existing non-conforming lots. So we figured 10 feet allows some wiggle room, and, but still allows that, a reduced setback. And then 20 feet in the rear is the same as what we have now, so it's really just about a front and a side setback change. The parentheses and then.
Well, you said, one of the things we looked at when we did this is if the lot size was minimum 50 foot frontage, and minimum 50 foot back, really, if it's 50 foot frontage, it's gonna be 60 back to 3,000, but if you take in, you, you take in the sides, and you take in the front back, you can easily get a 600 square foot footprint on a, on a lot, and meet all these setbacks, so you've got a 600 square foot, you know, two story would be a 1,200 square foot house and these things, so we kind of tried to figure out, you know, what the lots would look like, if you could slap up.
So when we got down to my own bucket, you can't go though?
Yeah, exactly. So, I know, sorry, you just walked in, were you here for either Kensington or the Elm Street? Kensington was continued, yeah, they, the developer asked for a continuation, we're gonna do it on May 10th.
Thanks, guys.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
So then, the height, the reason why it's highlighted on the screen, goes up to 50 from, there are variations of where you could get to 55 feet now, if you did a four story building, and you went through special permit, your height now is 55 feet. This is an attempt to just say, you can go up to 50 feet, we're not gonna create all these different paths to achieve, you know, new development. So it's, it's a, it's a way of simplifying that. And then just going back to the 20 foot side setback, if the building is taller than 40 feet, is really to get at some of the concerns about infilling too much and solar access, so that if you are, if you are gonna be building a taller building, your setback is gonna be slightly different, it's not gonna be the same as if you're a single family, or a two or three family. So then, if we just slide over, are there any questions about these dimensions?
Yeah, sorry, what does that EU overlay?
So URC, EU is educational use, as a matter of fact, not, you know, it's in this country. And it's only covers the area for Smith College, so all the core campus of Smith College is along the Elm Street, so it, it also happens to be URC, so I just wanna make that quick then.
Smith College is Europe.
URC, for the most part.
I'm a URC. I'm a long department.
Right.
Great.
It seems to me that you went into this with the idea that it would be a great idea to make everybody that's non-conforming conforming as much as possible.
That wasn't the, the sole motivation, the motivation really was, make the zoning reflect what's currently in URC.
Okay, that assumes that, but is there, the maximum density is there is fine, and we're trying to get as close to it as possible.
Right, and that was, that was the assumption, that, you know, the neighborhoods we have around, that are in URC, people like, you know, they're densely close, densely populated, close to downtown, walking, it's where we want the most density, because the closest thing is city services, the buses, the ability to get downtown, you know, walk to First Street School, or go to walk, you know, but so, the idea was, if we could make URC, if we make the zoning in URC reflect what's currently there, what would be illegal? You'd get the same.
Did.
Not making it any less restrictive than it is now.
Did you get an idea of how many buildable lots there were?
We did look at that, I don't remember the number though.
Well, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to know that, now it's very few. I mean, clearly creating, bringing the frontage down and the lot size down to 50, there might be some lots out there that are currently 100, have 100 feet of frontage, which is more than the 75 required, but not quite enough for another single family house, and then bringing the lot size from 6,000 down to 3,000, yes, you could carve off a lot, but there's no, it would be hard to know exactly how many new lots, potential new lots there would be, because it's, they're all gonna be ba, for the most part, URC is built out, except for maybe you've got a little room here or there to carve up a new lot, or add units to an existing structure is really what this would do.
And that was one of the things we talked about a lot, you know, specifically, the idea that one, one person was given a very clear case study, where it's a big house, and they wanna carve into, that they wanna put a second unit, that they, it was a three story Victorian, and they wanna make the upstairs apartment. So it's adding density downtown, without building any new buildings, without changing the footprint of the building, from the outside, you wouldn't even be able to tell it's a multifamily. But because the lot is not 12,000 square feet, which is what you need in URC to have a multifamily, you couldn't do it. And then, so, the other thing that's happened is people have taken some of these houses that were multifamily and dropped them down to single family, you know, around the corner of, what, Pleasant Street, you know, not, or Prospect Street, that corner of Prospect where those three buildings in a row got sold?
Prospect was in.
Prospect was in, oh, yeah, yeah, well, the second one, the one that's on the corner was a, was a multifamily, but the one next to it had been a multifamily and was converted to a single family, and I think it was.
Like over 3,000 square feet total in the house.
Right, but it was like, right, and it was like some, it was, the bottom was then used for.
An antique place.
Yeah, it was a retail place, but you could never, because of the zoning, you'd never go back to where it was originally built, it could never be a multifamily again, because it doesn't have 12,000 square feet. So a lot of what we talked about wasn't necessarily new construction, but a lot of it was allowing people to do something to their house, temporarily make it a multifamily, then swap it back.
But there, there is a, certainly, the other piece of it is, some people are close to getting to the special permit dimensional averaging requirement or allowance in the zoning, and they don't quite meet it, and so we looked at Walnut Street as a sample street, and there were, you know, some bigger lots where there was a house and lots of land, but, and it ended up that they did come to you all for a special permit for that lot size reduction, but if you look at, it was really a missing tooth in that block, so the idea is, you know, create the provision for building out those little empty holes in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think Grove Street at the upper end and Chapel Street, I think that's URC, that's what I think of, they put in, they put in four new units up at the end of Grove Street, when the lot size required was, I think, 8,000 square feet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they came up for dimensional averaging.
I don't think there's any more room up there anymore, but.
Where there's what, one there, too. But so, so yes, there could be some instances where you could carve off a separate lot, and, or you could do it now under dimensional averaging, but now, but if the new zoning, something like this were to pass, you wouldn't have to go through the special permit process, that this would, this sort of replaces all of those other special permit provisions that are out there for doing, creating new lot.
Right, so it's a way of like, you know, one of the, the sustainability plan, talked about infill a lot, and this is a way of doing infill, not necessarily having to build up a, a new building, you know, I think of, where I lived on Palmero Terrace, my next door neighbor bought a two family house, converted to a single family, lived there by himself, he's now selling it, but he can never sell it to the two family because of that.
I don't have any concern about that, I'm, I'm more, more like new construction that would.
I thought it was, but it was like a year ago, or a year and a half ago.
Yeah, but the reason why it's hard to determine that is because you have to take in, you'd have to look at each parcel that has a little bit of extra land and figure out where the building sits on that property. It could be that it's too far into the middle of the property to really even get to 3,000 square feet, 50 feet of separate frontage, or maybe it is. I mean, I think of, there's someone who I've been talking with a lot, I mean, I have lots of examples of people who wanted to create one additional lot, they have a multifamily, but their lots merged because they don't meet the minimum lot size requirement even for their multifamily, but yet they have this piece of property, they can't really do anything with, it has frontage and it looks like it needs a house to fill in the block, block face, and they can't. And that's on, you know, that one happened to be on Eastern Avenue, but there's, I can think of, you know, a handful of others throughout the city, not just on that side in URC, but on, you know, this side of downtown, too. So yes, there would be the ability to create new, smaller homes, but the whole idea is, we're not building big apartment buildings on these infill lots, they're gonna be probably within context, you could get two or three, you know. You could get two or three, you know.
But it's interesting, you know, with garage, which couldn't be, I think all the big old garages are down, you know.
But I really wanted to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. So actually, there's a piece of that too in the detached accessory unit. So that's sort of the reasoning behind the big changes in the dimensions.
Now, the, I think, you know, what would, what makes this, all of these things a little bit of a hard sell is people who are going to think, oh, you're just a lot of people build, you know, lots of new houses. Even though their house may be on a four thousand square foot lot or three thousand square foot lot now. Especially, you know, URC, people think it, they always think of, you know, we're trying to make URC, you know, really dense. That's why we did URB and URA as well. We look, try to look at all of them because this is the kind of thing that-
Yeah, I think, I think one of my concerns is the unintended consequences. And I hope that a lot of thought has been put into all the possibilities here.
Good point. I don't know, maybe look at a map like that, but I mean, I'm not sure how much, like you said, every lot's different. We have to look at every lot and just try to figure it out.
Because some of the neighbors have been removed up there.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, undoubtedly.
It's the kind of thing, if they came to us as an individual, I wanted to put in, I want to put an accessory structure in my yard. Sorry, you can't, your lot's too small. But if you change the zoning, you'll get it, you know. Then they'd probably be all for it. But if they're just here, we're going to do it.
Right.
It's the kind of thing that, you know, to make it harder.
I mean, here's another example of a new structure potentially at the corner of Fruit and South Street. That big lot that was, a larger lot that was sold off from the Clap Holdings. And there's a two-family and there's almost enough to create another single-family house lot. But she's shy, I don't know, five, ten feet or whatever from meeting the zero lot line standard. So, you know, that is a, that I would say is a good location for another house. If you want another house close to town and there's a high demand for that.
But it's not really a missing tooth the way that it is on Walnut Street or something like that.
No, but it is a larger lot.
There's nothing wrong with some green space here and there.
Well, that was, that was one of the concerns because we had a couple of public hearings in this. A couple, you know, ZRC had two or three public forums in this. And a lot of people were saying, well, we want to preserve public space. But a lot of this public space is people's yards, it's private land.
Right, that's certainly true.
You know, it's, you know, so it's not public space in Central Park. We're not advocating-
I've always watched my dog there.
Right, so therefore, here your yard is my park. It's like, well, no, it's somebody's yard.
But it is, I mean, it's, you know, that you build on and it's not.
Yep, that's true.
Right, so I mean, that's where you sort of get into the idea of we're trying to achieve goals of creating different, a whole different range of housing. I mean, not necessarily different range, but a whole, within the continuum of housing types to try to get at more affordability. And where do we want those units and differ, all different types of units? Sometimes it's going to be units that you can add within a structure. Sometimes it might make sense to add a modest-sized house on a new lot because we need to have different types of housing options for people, not just brand-new houses that start at six hundred thousand dollars in Village Hill. So, yeah.
Well, that's what, and so, and I mean, I know when we look at URC, we do the same thing with URB. The numbers are different, but URB has exactly the same problem. Their whole neighborhood is in URB. Nice neighborhood you can never build, North Elm Street or North Maple or Forest. You can never build that street. You know, so, and that's URB. It's not just a URC issue. It's not just the smaller lot size. But when you look at some of those neighborhoods in URB that we could never record, you know, recreate now because a lot of those houses, I'd say, North Maple, are multifamily and they have to be on that, what's it, twenty-four thousand square foot lot? You know, there's no way.
By to me, I mean, in the end, all of this, the goal of this just makes sense because all of the neighborhoods that made North Hampton, North Hampton, the ones that everybody enjoys and wants to have more of if we had that option, or we don't have that option now, and even ones that exist, you know, are illegal, so.
Yeah, even, you know, even roads off Elm Street, you know, the neighborhoods, you know, at Crescent Street. There's lots of houses on Crescent Street. You can build today.
Well, even some of those, you know, the big historic homes right on Elm Street that are enormous, I don't know, three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet. And right now, you can only put one family in top of them. And it's just too much house for many people. I mean, I know some people want eight thousand square feet.
We aren't really going to tear them down and rebuild them here. Why wouldn't you just, and I'm just exploring this, why wouldn't you just allow a building to revert to any number of units that-
This is only just a lot.
But do we need to deal with all of the dimensionality in order to just allow a two-family that had gone to a one-family to go back to a two-family?
But sometimes you can't, I mean, how, what's the, how do you prove that, you know? Maybe it happened so long ago, we can't remember or-
Anyways, the dimensional thing keeps it from being able to go down.
Right, okay, yeah.
But that also brings up another point. What if, what if somebody decided, well, I've got this thing, I'm going to tear it down and put in two? I mean, you could see a loss of some of the, right, two.
Yeah, you could see that now, yeah.
You could see some more energy addition now to being built.
Easy, you can see it.
Well, people could tear, buy two buildings and tear them down now and rebuild.
Yeah, but they, well, they might have an incentive if they can put in more than one unit.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so buy some crappy little thing, knock it down, put a four-unit house on it.
Yeah.
Four you can build in.
I mean, if you want the four units there, then that's okay, but I don't-
I'm all for that.
Well, and again, the thing to remember, this is, a lot of the motivation for this came out of Sustainability Plan, which was all about infill and bringing people closer to downtown, making it walkable, making, you know, remember those circles, those ten-minute circles wherever they were? Where within a half a mile, you should be able to within a half a mile or a ten-minute walk get to most of the things that you need, you know. And so that's why, by, by making it so people can, can build and move downtown, the whole idea of Sustainability Plan was to get to, was to work towards that. Not to sprawl out at fifty-six or, you know, the car arc and kind of development. You can't see so much of, but no, I mean, you raised, these are all really good points. These are, you know, these are the kind of things that we, you know, that people brought up when we have discussions. It does look weird when you tell somebody, we're going to go from six thousand to a three thousand square foot minimum lot size. You know, that, but when you look at the maps and maybe whenever we did presentations, we always showed on these streets in Ward Three or Moose Street?
That Walnut thing.
Walnut, I mean Walnut.
Yeah.
Eight out of, or nine out of ten houses on that street could never be built.
I know it was really good, it could help people frame their, moving forward a lot.
Yeah, and it really helped people to kind of visualize it.
Yeah.
And we did, you know, if we did North Maple, it really helped people see. You know, those are, it's not just downtown, it's not just URC, it's all over.
I suppose as an intellectual exercise, exercises, it's interesting to say that those houses never could be built. On the other hand, you could say, so what?
Well, I think like Mark said, those are the neighborhoods that people find desirable if they want to live in. There's a lot about living down, that people want to live there.
Thank you.
Good question, if you wouldn't let your neighbor building next to you like he is now?
Not if he had twelve chickens.
All right, it all comes down to chickens.
We don't land in there, but.
So Carol, so is there, do you want to keep going or what?
Well, you, maybe we'll just finish out this, this row here and then, and then we can talk more.
Well, I guess is your goal, do you want to present URC B and A to us? Or are you trying to go forward with one of them?
Well, my initial goal was to hit you with three together.
Right.
But it was taking so long, I thought, you know, let's just get this started. But I think before you start, I, and so I wanted to get feedback. Is this the right, are you, is this the right way to go? Probably need to have more strategy about that. But before you all as a group decide you want to move this step forward, I think all three of you need to come together at the same time as you start embarking on public outreach. Because that obviously was heard a lot, that we don't want to just pick on one neighborhood or one district, that this is really all about all the neighborhoods in them.
Well, and I apologize for taking you back through the umbrella. But I mean, I think as we start talking to people about it, I need to remember that's where it came from. That's what we'll do. I mean, it's almost like, give me the party, you know, let me, let me refresh the, what we're up to here because I want to help the people.
Yeah, well, it's been years since the plan was adopted, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, we talked about this, and ZRC stopped a year ago. And we, so three years ago was when we, the ZRC first started looking at this.
Well, and that's about when I started. I was very serious about following that, I mean.
No, this took a long time to put together. We had-
My ZRC's been so long since we did this, we've got to start again.
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what we're doing, so we got-
Well, and I guess I'm curious, as you start trying to put the tables together, what, I mean, this is your business. What's your experience with it? I mean, is it working? Is it fitting together? Is it, are you stumbling over trying to get things to work?
Well, I mean, it is, there is much more complicated to do these section by section because, you know, and like I said, I think the goal would be to have something like this and then eliminate all those little bitty special permit things that are scattered throughout the zoning. So that means that once you start tackling this, you got to start remembering where all those other pieces in the zoning are and start slashing them. And that's what I'm asking about. Yes, it's complicated, but I don't, I mean, it's either that or throw up your hands and say, we need to spend three hundred thousand dollars on a consultant to do whatever he wants and just hand it to us and say, here's your new code.
How cumbersome would it be if, if we said, okay, URC, our goal is, is to make eighty percent of what exists now conform? And, and we massage the dimensions and so forth and we're headed in that direction. How cumbersome would it be to have, as we discussed this moving forward, maps that show, okay, here's URC, here's eighty percent, you know, or right now, whatever, sixty-three percent and show we can't even build? And after this, because this all conceptually means that a lot, it makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
But the only place it wouldn't make sense is if I see like a map and I see, as Frandy was mentioning, like open lots, that might trigger a red flag that, oh, wait a minute, we could be headed down the wrong path here because there, we could, there could be a lot of new construction in this area that we rarely weren't thinking about and do we want this type of construction?
Yeah. I mean, we could do that generally. And so I go back to sort of looking at the difference in B would be, I wouldn't say go down to this little lot size because B has a different kind of characteristic than C. So, you know, my framework would say would be, let's use five thousand square feet as a minimum lot size. And the rationale behind that is that under state statute, if you have a five thousand square foot lot that's never been built on, you can build by right, no matter what the zoning says, one single-family home. So already there's a provision out there in state statute that uses five thousand square feet. So maybe that's a good starting point for B. And then that in itself would mean that, you know, if there were more land area in B, you're not going to get it all carved up in three thousand square foot lots because, you know, the number is different.
What I'm hearing Mark saying though is going full circle. Like we, we started out, we looked at maps and we said, you know, does the zoning apply now? And it clearly didn't.
Yeah.
And so now that we've rethought the zoning, looking at a map again and saying, now what is it applying? You know, does, does this reflect what is there?
Yeah, I mean, ZRC did a lot of that in terms of bringing the percent. So I think they came up with, if they, if, and you, in C, and they did the same thing for B and A, if you took thirty-two hundred square feet as a lot, minimum lot size, then that would mean, you know, eighty or whatever percentage would then-
Yeah, it was seventy-five, it sounded like seventy-five.
Yeah, seventy-five percent instead of thirteen percent. So you'd bump up. So I think we could do that number relatively. But again, it's only going to be for lot size, not for frontage or setbacks because that's a much harder, I mean, you can maybe interpolate from area photos, but it's much harder for those other numbers to-
Right. I just think that would be, because we're going to end up with a roof full of people saying, I lived in URB and this, you know, what is this going to mean to me? And we're going to have to make all of this, you know, as, as clear to them as we're trying to make it to ourselves. And I think the more information, the more concise, the better.
I always thought it would be great to have a map. I mean, it would be a ton of work, you know, show URC, all of URC, D and A, and show every house that is applying or not. And it would be a lot of, you know, exercise.
I mean, that would be a powerful tool and it's fairly suitable, but it would be, it would be a lot of work.
If we just did a lot of-
We'd just be, you know, to an extent, we're doing so much work with ZRC.
Right.
But you can see at the meetings and say, well, I live on North Farms or I live on Maynard. And I, my house is fine. And then you show Maynard Road, say, no, it doesn't conform, you couldn't build it.
But you know, we could do that in a simpler way. It, you know, take the big map and maybe say, you know, blotch out something in this area of the city in B. Here's B and fifty-seven percent don't comply. And then zoom in on a particular neighborhood in which you know there are few. So you can provide bits of examples, but not necessarily every single one.
Right, and if you did it before and after, you said, here's a typical URC, here's a, what is generally considered desirable neighborhood. Right now, sixty-three percent doesn't conform. That's the before picture. And now slide two shows after these, you know, if we adopt these dimensional changes, eighty-five percent will, without changing anything, without, there's no new construction or anything like that. It's just-
Right, the only way, the only way to get to a hundred percent, if you want to get URC to a hundred percent, you have to do basically like a ten-foot frontage and, you know, a two-hundred square foot lot. There's no way to get to a hundred percent.
You know what that's missing though is what I really hope the goal of this is, is taking big houses and turning them into multiple.
Right.
And then I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm not sure that what we're talking about could reflect that.
I, I, it seems to me there's too much emphasis on bringing this area into compliance rather than deciding what you actually want. And it may end up at the same place, but I think-
Well, I guess, I mean, you're right.
It's part of the analysis, it's sort of the rationale for why, why does it matter? Or why, you know, one of the questions is, well, why do we need to make a change? Well, because you can't add another unit to your house because your lot. So I think that, I think if you show that, so if one of the goals would be to allow flexibility within an existing structure and you show that for all three families in URB, you know, eighty percent of the three families are nonconforming. If you create a zoning dimension that allows all of those to comply, then you can grab some of the singles and twos and they can bump up to a three and be okay.
Maybe, maybe one of the approaches would be about fairness or the unfairness of the current system and how it would be fairer to prefer units.
But responding to your comment, Frandy, I think in part what this has done is decide that the existing conditions in URC are what we want to a large extent. And so by making the zoning compliant with existing conditions, we are in effect creating a zoning that promotes both those threats.
I'm trying to examine whether that is actually what we want.
Well, one of the things we did, one exercise we did, we said, let's just get rid of lot size requirements altogether. Say, forget it, you don't care how big your lot is. All we want to do is make sure the setbacks are right. So we want ten-foot back from the sides and twenty from the back and ten from the front. And you need, but then you need space for a driveway because, you know, on-street parking is a big problem. So, so we did that and we just said, forget the lots. And you ended up with a three thousand square foot lot, just about, just about what this is. That you could build a house of any size with parking. When we did the presentations of these, this thing, you'd be amazed. The one thing that people really cared about was making sure the cars weren't parked on the street. That was probably, you know, it's amazing how often parking and traffic is the one thing that people care about almost above and beyond anything else. And so, so when we just did it, we just drew it out. Space for two parking spots, thirty percent open space, setbacks, you're at like two grand, three thousand.
You know, the thing that's interesting to me, but I had no idea how to do it, I'd like to know that, you know, we can, we can house, you know, fourteen thousand people in this zone area right now and if you change the zoning, we could house eighteen thousand.
Well, didn't that come up? Somebody, somebody did, there was a census that showed how many people lived in URC close to downtown thirty years ago, fifty years ago? There was many more people living downtown fifty years ago than there are now.
And I think that's where we are.
So we've lost a lot of the youth.
What we need to go back to.
Yeah.
Where I used to live on James Avenue, there was a guy who had eight kids. It was a big old house and then a couple moved in.
Yeah, well, the house I lived in, there were six kids, you know, the ones, the one we bought.
That's not exactly what I was after.
No, but, but it was, but you look at these, you know, we have these pictures. I think even they were from Notre Dame when they showed, when you showed that where the houses were in North Hampton fifteen hundred years ago when the population was exactly the same as it is today, there, all the houses were downtown and Forest. And then you look at the population exactly the same as it was, but it's, it's just mushed out.
Of course, we also have to address the zoning in suburban and residential world eventually. And part of the purpose of this increased density downtown is to discourage, we also have to discourage people building West Hampton Road.
Right, well, one of, one of the things we did already was to change the zoning to water supply protection. Instead of having the underlying A and SR, now we have WSP that basically says, you know, for any of those, despite what you're, you know, it's more clear about building, that we don't want new lots that are- you know, it's more clear about building, that we don't want new lots that are.
Because we're going to run into farms out there where they, when they die, there's only one fourth of the farm being used.
Well, we still have to adjust that.
Well, remember, didn't, was it a couple of years ago, we made, was it eighty thousand square foot lot minimum?
Well, that was already, are you talking about for the water supply protection?
Is that where it was? I'm trying to remember where it was.
We've had eighty thousand for.
Wayne Flotter, the four hundred foot frontage.
Well, we changed it to eighty thousand square foot, I thought.
Yeah, we've had eighty thousand for some districts for a while, so the rural residential and.
And what does that do?
Eighty thousand square foot minimum lot size.
And/or a four hundred foot frontage.
Can't build any house.
It means you have out, out.
Well, well, the other piece of it though is really to address clusters, so that's coming too. Because then if you make cluster easier, then you're going to have, you're, and you have more specificity about the areas you're trying to protect within that cluster, you're going to get better land patterns within that same area.
This is exactly what I built on, is huge.
Yeah, I put this on.
Oh, no, that's, that's in the, uh, the groupies, where we don't want people, you know, discourage people from building, you know, row houses.
Are you, are a land city services?
Not past, where's the city water and sewer stuff?
Well, water is out to Glendale, but sewer is not.
Yeah, like as.
Sewer stuff's a think it, you want.
Yeah, because we have a subject. But that was, because a lot of those, we're going to use well, they were, they need wells out there. But that was, you know, I'm trying to remember when we did that, I'm wondering, the eight thousand square feet minimum lot size.
We could dig up those stats here from Notre Dame study, where the, where the fifty years ago, the density population.
That was part of the plan, that's in the plan.
Yeah.
That'd be a problem. I don't know how this vote is, it's down on that one.
All right, so what, well.
So let me just go through the rest of these things, and then we can decide what you want to do next. So the next, the other piece of it is minimum parking for this is, you'll notice a red line through, right now, it's one parking space per five hundred square feet of gross floor area, or up to a maximum of two per unit. And then the way it also is stated is that you need a minimum of three. If you add an accessory apartment, you have to have one additional spot for that unit, which is, your maximum accessory apartment is nine hundred square feet. So we thought that the minimum, changing the minimum parking to one per nine hundred square feet of gross floor area, up to two maximum, and getting rid of the fractional provision where if you're one and a half spaces, if you're doing one per five hundred, then you bump up one more space, or you bump down. Get rid of all that calculation, just say it's one per nine hundred square feet of gross floor area. So you, in the end, you're, you're getting about the same amount of parking spaces required, but it's a simpler calculation especially. And then this whole column for building design is new. And this sort of gets at, if you're building new buildings, and it, as an element of this infill and potentially concern of carving off new lots, that the idea is, and we took, this language is many of, the first item, the language is in, is currently in, I think, the zero lot line provisions already. So it's about, if you have a garage or other parking that's attached to the structure, it has to be setback twenty feet instead of a ten-foot setback. And the structure can't comprise more than thirty percent of the front facade of that principal structure. So you're still presenting sort of an urban character, a house on the street, instead of a garage or a mouth opening on the street that's just for your car.
And that's, so can I ask, that's by area or?
Well, right now, we're talking about URC, but I think for.
Well, by, by, I mean, that, that measure number thirty percent, is that, I'm thinking.
It's by the building facade, not by the.
Right, so it's, it's the area, not the, the new foundation, because I'm thinking like, for instance, having garages of housing over the, above the garage.
Right, right. So it would be the whole facade, yeah. Yeah, we sort of thought about that too, especially if you're building into a hill, and you might want to use the hill as your garage day. So then item two came from the zoning provisions committee, there's a lot of discussion about design, and it's in that packet. Front doors must face the street, front porches of at least six feet deep and eight feet long. That comes from village health standards for front porches. And then for new buildings, a provision that setbacks scale and massing fit in with the, with the block face. And they're all starred because if there's an example which someone has and then wants to do something different, they can always come to the planning board, the relief valve. If they can't or don't want to meet those standards, they can always pitch the idea to the planning board through site plan approval to do something else. So these are all new. We don't have any design standards for any of the residential districts except for planned village right now, or in the case of cluster, there are some provisions about garages, attached garages. So, you know, we can, I could leave this with you and then email you this, and we can talk about it more next time. And then I might be able to have a, the start of B ready for next time. So it's up to you, or we could keep going through this now.
Just a quick question on the front porch. The front porches must be included, or if they're included, they must be six feet deep?
Yeah, must be included, yeah.
Like, on, on item two, if you want a consistent streetscape, that you should just require the front, to be a front door.
Right. Well, that's what this provision is.
But that would, that'd be one that we'd be unlikely to approve, even though, I mean, the aesthetics of it is one consideration, but you said, if you can show that the pedestrian scale design is pretty public, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So I don't think that would be an exception.
Well, but let me give you an example. There are, I mean, I didn't really like this provision when it came out of the zoning provisions committee first, because I could think of a handful of examples where there are historic homes that doesn't have doors facing the street. Union Street, I think there are two or three of them where the end of the house is right on Union Street, and the door faces a courtyard or, you know, the lawn area or something. And they, they're fine on that street. I mean, there isn't, there isn't a problem of putting a back end of a house. You don't get that sense on Union Street. So I think there probably are examples that, where it works.
Well, it's, it's like a Maynard Road, I think it is, there's a house that's in their size, and it looks like hell to me.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is there may be examples where it makes sense, and then other ones that don't. And so at least allow a relief valve in the cases where it could make sense. I mean, there are also examples of front doors that face the house, but they've got two L's that are blank faces that come further than a front door, so that, you know, the door's still there, but it doesn't necessarily look right.
Well, a lot of people have used a front door, hey, but it's there.
I'm basically a bitch.
You said you want to talk about, is there other things on this you want to talk about besides the dimensions?
Well, yeah, I mean, there are a lot of changes, so the ones that are highlighted, which didn't come out so well on the black and white copy, are changes from special permit just to site plan and like.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, part of the challenge.
Yeah, and we changed the language for educational, the, the language for educational use is, is convoluted right now. We tried to distinguish between for-profit schools and colleges versus nonprofit colleges and universities. But there, in no case, they would be special permit. And we've got a special permit now for private schools at URC. And then just going down, the other piece is accessory structures that are detached. There's this highlighted area on the screen, we've had some comment, I mean, it's not pervasive, but many times people want to build more than a thousand square feet of detached structure. So they might have a garage and a shed, or, you know, whatever, whatever they have. And, and they might have five acres in the urban residential district, or two acres. And they're held to the same maximum one thousand square foot of footprint. And so this is just an attempt to allow some flexibility for those larger lots. And three percent was really just sort of picking a number and trying it, not making it too crazy. I mean, if you think about a thousand square foot of lot coverage for a garage in the URC is the size of the house. So it's kind of absurd to think that, you know.
But did you talk about a thousand square feet of lot coverage or three percent of lot area, whichever is greater? So that's saying the smallest thing you can build is a thousand square feet.
Right, because that's what it is. No, the minimum, the maximum now is a thousand square feet.
So should we do whichever is less?
No, because you want three percent, if you have a big old piece of property, you might be able to build something bigger than a thousand square feet.
Right.
But, but no larger than one thousand square feet of block coverage, so I can build a thousand square foot accessory structure?
But if you have a thousand miles in URC and build something that's thirty square.
Yeah.
But that means the minimum accessory structure size.
I said, no larger than one thousand square feet.
No larger, so anybody can build a thousand square foot.
Right now.
Oh, okay, so that's okay, that's, that's the way it is now.
That's the way it is now in every district, unless you're agriculture, a thousand square feet.
But accessory parkage, it would be nine hundred.
Right, that's gross floor area. This is lot coverage.
So technically.
Well, we could change that too. Should we make it to?
I'm going to make that ten shed, am I okay?
Sounds eighty-one.
You don't even need a building center.
What would, if it were a thousand square feet and it were, and it were equal to three percent of the lot size, how big a lot would that be?
Thirty-three thousand square feet?
Yeah, that's where the breakpoint was, about a third of an acre was where you started getting above it. But the allowance allowed you more than a thousand square feet. The other big thing is sort of merging planning unit development and cluster, and changing this area about the minimum lot size. Right now is three acres in URC, bringing that down to two acres. And then just dealing with the, the project setbacks, but allowing for the applicant to design the internal layout in any way that makes sense, so they're not sort of predetermined setbacks and lot sizes. But the merging of planning unit and cluster is really, the only difference between planning unit and cluster in our zoning right now is a planning unit is about allowing some mix of commercial within the project, and cluster is only residential. So the idea is, you know, there's no need to have two separate things. I mean, they basically, they have the same provisions, but allow some, if there's a little grocery or office, it's part of a cluster. Why not allow it? But, so, then, then the other, the other things are on the page three, I guess. There's some deletions and.
Wait, I want to know why we got rid of the crematory.
We're moving it to its own place.
Don't worry about crematory.
We, you know, cemeteries are okay, but we probably want to have more permitting for a crematory. Whereas now, it's in the zoning that it's part of the cemetery, necessarily part of the cemetery. And this is just sort of separating them, that, okay.
I can leave it right with you, it seems fine with you.
Until it's next door.
I don't think you smell them.
You're probably not supposed to.
I don't think I want to find out.
So, and then at the bottom of this table are just sort of the notes and trying to keep track of all those little things that are in other parts of the ordinance that have to be part of this change.
Yeah, but I read B, the sentence.
Uh, which one?
Uh, B.
Mental averaging?
Yeah. Does the sentence actually make sense?
No, these are like footnote placeholders, don't forget to go back to that, so.
Okay. So don't worry right now.
Don't worry about the syntax or anything like that. I have time to get back to it.
Go ahead, Frandy. I want to get out of here at eight-thirty, don't we? Get out at nine, and I, Mark will come down. At eight-thirty, don't we?
I like your priorities.
Well, but I think, oh, sorry, go ahead, Frandy.
I just had a question about, to go back, why do you differentiate between for-profit and nonprofit educational?
Because it's in the state statute that way. So basically, because if you have private, well, actually, now that it's changed, originally, you could, most of the colleges and universities that were in, where the intention was to protect their ability to function under Dover, were about nonprofit institute, you know, your bigger universities and colleges throughout the Commonwealth. I don't, the only private schools or colleges that, uh, we didn't even have any private colleges, private for-profit colleges, but the only thing, categories I would fall into are really sort of like driving schools or karate schools or things like that, that are not, not nonprofit. And those, we were thinking needed to have special permits in some districts, because maybe they're not appropriate. In URC, I think they probably would be appropriate with site plan approval, if you deal with the traffic flow and the, and the egress and things like that. But in some districts, they may not be appropriate.
So Dover doesn't apply to for-profit?
Now, you can distinguish between for-profit and not-for-profit under.
What about something like internet and language?
Was that nonprofit? I don't know.
I'm assuming it's for-profit.
Yeah. So most of them are, I mean, you know, and the only thing I can think of is that's come up recently in the Republican primary about the for-profit colleges down in Florida supporting one candidate or the other. And I don't know of any instances around here where we've got those kind of things.
So I think, is it, it may tend to do zoning, that's, will we look at URB, A, if we don't?
I hope so. I don't, you know, I'm trying.
Because, yeah, I don't think we can go forward with this one.
Yeah, yeah. But I wanted to sort of get a sense from you, is this, you know, is, this is a dramatic change, particularly in terms of the dimensions, we didn't talk about a lot of these use changes. But is that the right foot to put over? Or, and then if it needs to be tweaked or scaled back, you know, pulled back, should we go more? You know, reduce the dimensions more, or?
Well, I, because I, I've worked on this for a while, so I, I'm happy with the way it is, but, I mean, people, what do people think?
I think it's the right direction. I mean, we talked about it through ZRC for two, three years. And, and I think the, conceptually, it's, it's, you know, founded in a good thought process, and we just need to continue it and, and just be clear, because in the end, we're trying to make this more user-friendly, streamline it and, and bring it back to enable things to happen that can't happen now, that we want them to happen. To try to explain all that in a nice, easy PowerPoint demonstration, I, I think it's going to be very difficult. So I think we just need to kind of streamline it as best we can and make it as easy for the end consumer as possible.
Ditto, but can I have another question I'm not sure I'm even able to ask? But there was recently some state legislation on permitting that was proposed. And what we're doing here is actually going from special permit into, we are, the, the result of doing this would have fewer special permits.
Yeah, yeah.
And so is, would, would we be in a position of having some things, and I'm not, I have the wrong ones for this, but in essence shoved down our throat because we no longer have a special permitting option with which to fall back on. So, and I'm just, I'm like Frandy, looking for unintended consequences. I, I, I ditto just what he said. I think we're headed in the right direction. I'm just trying to think about it from where we might.
Yeah.
Put ourselves in the future if we gave up the requirement for special permitting.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the hard thing to know is, I mean, it's all like when PBPC came to you and said, endorse our plan, and it's based on this legislation that we're sure is going to get passed, and when you know it's turned on its head and it's something totally different.
Right.
So it's hard to know whether the legislation that's pending is going anywhere, or how much of it is going anywhere.
And I don't think we can zone to that, I'm not trying to get into that.
And I think, I think the idea though is really to say, what do we want in terms of housing? And if we want that type of housing, then don't put up barricades, don't put up special permits for that.
I, I think the ZRC did a great job. They worked hard on it for a couple of years. And I think we should spend a lot of time reinventing the wheel. I think some of the unintended uses, problems, we can really look at what kind of uses are being changed from special permit and so on. But in terms of zoning and setback, I mean, at least for URC, we're essentially approving what's there. And I don't have any problem with that. I think it's, it's what we should be doing.
And, and I think the public will understand things about uses, and that's their, their focus. I don't think they're going to get all. I don't think they're going to get all hung up on dimensionality. I think it's vague until you start seeing the math.
I think they're scared if they're, they're going to say, they hear these numbers being reduced and they're sort of, what is that? I mean, a skyscraper is going to be built next to me or?
Yeah, I think that's why showing law enforcement was really effective in those.
Right. So you had a pretty good feedback from the committee. You didn't show other people what the.
You didn't. That's what I said. Local care about parking. At, at Oldson Park, you didn't even make it a park in the street. No, we made it a park in the street.
God forbid.
Well, and open space was a big issue.
An open space, sorry.
Sort of keeping that as a.
But it was the open space where people were worried, you know, it's like we talked about, it was private space that.
Right, right, right.
Wasn't parked. It was, not holders and parks, people's backyard. All right, so, so while, if we can, May tenth, if not, Carol, what other zoning things could you want to talk about on May tenth?
No, this is where the work.
Okay, because Kensington could go, depending on what Kensington.
Yeah, I mean, we might at some point, maybe this summer, bring cluster forward because that's been sort of waiting out there too. A sort of almost fully fleshed out change, but this is really, really.
Do you want to still project or look at the committee names, committee stuff?
Um, yeah, you want to do committee?
Yeah.
Do you guys need me to project the committee stuff?
We have just enough time to.
We got twelve minutes. So, so, well, losing.
Librarians deliver?
What's that?
Librarians deliver.
We're making hobbles out. Well, we're losing Marilyn for Edmonds, so I thought maybe I'd do Edmonds.
Oh my God.
I almost said can't here.
Oh, really? Do you want to do it?
Um, definitely. Oh, we could have like an election, like with campaigns and stuff.
No, no, well, the other thing was, we need someone for transportation, right? Because Devin, you're going to do CPA.
We do, I, I must say, I, I'm in a bit of a bind over transportation there. That group needs someone. I mean, it's, it's all, it's all in the map now.
Who's the chair? Oh my God.
Organization.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need to layer a lot on this, but I'm, I'm, I'm happy to take the new assignment. I'm actually not sure I can cover both of them. And yet I'm lamenting having, leaving.
How often do they need, is it monthly?
But they need a time that's really hard for me to make.
What time? During the day or?
Four on Tuesday.
Oh, okay. That's, that's hard for anybody, right? I, I would, I think CPA and then, we're going to have maybe one or two new members. So there's a possibility that one of those two new members, I think, you think I'll attract.
Yeah, I would, I would be interested in not that many of blessing to do it, but trying to do some crossing, to do some overlap with whoever takes that committee.
Sure. No, I think that'd be great.
I'll try to cover it until they're, until they get there. But we just went through a hoopla over raising the parking. And it wasn't, it wasn't, the big, the big major change had already happened. We had raised parking rates a year ago. We had been, and we'd forgotten one little piece, which was the long-term parking.
I can get on it that soon.
And it opened up the whole thing again because we have all different committees. And it just sort of illustrated to me that, that group needs.
Well, I think, why don't you do CPA and if you can, do the transportation, so we get another member, but I think.
If I did go to the CPA, the last committee.
Yeah, well, Andrew, I mean, if you want to do Edmonds.
I'm not fast. I thought I could do with a change from three.
Well, as I said, because you can, you remember, maybe you remember it could be true. So if you want to do Edmonds, I'm fine with that. Well, I already have, I'm on the, the technical review committee, so I have.
Fine, I'll do Edmonds.
Okay, so while we, and does Edmonds, Jen still doing housing?
Yeah.
And Mark, you want to do capital improvement?
Capital improvement, tech review.
Yep. Frandy, tech review?
Tech review, CAC.
Huh? What now?
Okay, Frandy does CAC, your own favorite.
Well, I, I mean, it's something I'm going to work to abolish.
That's right.
As you walk into the sunset, holding hands with the CACs.
All right, so on tree committee open, we'll have, on grantation open.
I'll keep on tree committee for, until we get, at somebody else's line, because they're down to four people out of eight.
Oh, okay, thanks.
With a word on new members, yeah?
Uh, I know, I haven't heard anything about, Carly Youngblood, I can't remember who it was, Sarah, Carla.
No, Carla.
Youngblood, she was referred out, but I, I.
I don't know if they met yet.
Yeah, but she was referred out like six weeks ago.
Oh, it's not that long.
It was a while ago.
It's definitely been a couple of years.
Yeah, I would have thought she was, she would have been on to that. I know there's one of the, not, one other person we put at the paper's end. So at least there's one other candidate. But.
Because there's three slots, right?
Two.
I thought we.
Oh, no, you're right. Okay, we have three slots. Yeah, Carolyn, I'm sorry, Catherine, Marilyn, and the open public head.
Right, yeah.
All right, are there any other needs? Now we got two.
Yes, please.
Yeah, Devin?
Don't, don't, we need to nominate a chair.
That's what I'm going to say. We got a nominee chair.
I nominate Mark.
All right.
I second.
Second. Any discussion?
Thank you, thank you.
All right, all in favor? All right.
Really?
All right.
That was a wrong call.
It was like, that was a wrong call.
Thank you.
It was like a Jim Fatt would say.
Everybody's got.
Step four and everything else steps, yeah.
Paul, we need one more. We're going to do vice chair.
Can we all go for the vice chair?
What's that? I am fine with it, yeah.
Why don't you be vice chair? How many meetings you going to have?
He hasn't, he missed one, four years.
All right, even with three.
My whole, my whole meeting's as short as Jen.
That's right.
That's your campaign.
That's mine. Pipe out.
Every meeting will be four total.
Six chickens in every yard.
And one hour of business. Pass that article.
Oh, all right, so somebody want to nominate a chair?
I nominate Jen.
All right, second, second.
I have a good staff.
Thanks, guys.
All in favor? All right, Mark, get to your first ceremonial decision. You don't have to get up if you don't want to see a mayor.
I don't have to.
We don't have a chair adjourned. I can't find a chair adjourned. Officially close the meeting.
But there's her.
We need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, you need a motion to adjourn.
Hey, man, here.
Hello, we adjourn.
Here, we're second.
Oh, I'm seconding.
There you go.
All in favor to adjourn? Hey, listen up, people, not done yet.
We don't need her. She could.
All righty. Meeting adjourned.
And everybody knows the tradition is the new chair buys the first round.
She would like to enter.
No, it.